Give me the thumbs up when you're all set.
He probably didn't hear you.
I will call the meeting to order. First order of business is stand if you're able and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone have anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Report from school community members. Does anyone have anything they wish to mention?
Mr. Pro. So this is, it might be a little late, but I'll probably make a short story long, so I apologize in advance. Over the summer, I was talking to some parents of, who had kids on the state championship softball team. And they were asking who I, who they should talk to about getting a sign, you know, saying like Middleborough, home of nine, 2023 softball state champions. I said, well, you would have to add a couple other teams to that list. And Middleborough is big. We're bordered by nine people, I mean, nine other towns. So there's a lot of ins and outs in Middleborough. So it was like, how many signs do we get? Where would we put them? What's the best place for them? I was on a run the other day and I was thinking about it. Why don't we just get two and put them at the entrances to the high school? Middleborough High, home of, there's three in the last 10, 15 years that I can think of, the football team, the baseball team, the softball team.
Yeah.
And let's leave some space at the bottom for the next couple of teams, too.
Yeah, we could look at that. The only thing was, yeah, it's just obviously where it's positioned, right, to make sure it's out of, it's not problematic. Yeah, we can have, I can have a conversation with Hutch and get back to everyone.
Yeah, I was figuring if we can do it and put it on the school property, then we don't have to go through the board of selection and the DPW and everything else. We could just maybe ask DPW to print the signs up for us.
Yeah, we can have that conversation.
And then everybody knows we're the home of the champions.
You might be able to tap into the MyLab to produce those signs, actually. Our innovation lab might be able to produce them with.
I don't care how it gets done. I'm gonna say yes. If somebody says, how about we do this? I'll say yes.
I'll talk with Tony Cupe if you want to talk with.
Yeah, I'll talk to Hutch and find out.
All right, beautiful. That'd be great, I think. Thank you.
Cool. Thanks, Al. Anyone else? Chris?
Yeah, I spend a lot of time at the T-ball field and I just wanted to recognize I have been overwhelmed with the amount of people coming up and talking about how positive the kickoff to the MECS year is. I got to attend the open house and the energy was just great, but the amount of different families that have expressed positive feedback. So Mr. Goldbeal and everybody else over there deserves a shout out. So just thank you to all you guys.
Awesome. Anybody else? Cool. And I'll turn it over to our student rep, Colin. Go right ahead, Colin.
Hello, everybody. I have a few reports here. Over at the MECS, the youngest students have began integrating the fall season into their learning. We're learning about pumpkins, apples. Including pumpkins, apples, and the changing of the color of leaves. And a lot of the classes have already visited the public library and read the books and have been informed how to use the library as a resource. They've also had a great showing at their open house and all the students enjoyed showing their parents and guardians all the hard work they've been doing. Over at the HB, they, as well as the MKG has started their after-school clubs and activities, including an engineer club where they will use Legos and build architecture with them, chess club and a junior police officer club with Officer Valerio. Also, as the month comes to an end, all students are looking forward to the school's most popular and biggest event, the HB Big Blast, which will be held on October 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. At the MKG, they're hosting a harvest dance from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. tomorrow night for grades first through third. Also, the school principal would like to give a thanks to all the volunteers who made the first school store a great success. At the middle school, the musical cast and crew has already started practicing their performance for The Wizard of Oz, as well as other school activities being, or clubs being, the Builders Club, which I believe is also the key club, or a junior version of it. The Art Club, GSA and Chess Club. With these after-school activities, there will be late buses on Mondays, Wednesdays and Tuesdays. As well as fall sports are close to the end of their season with final home games coming up, including the boys and girls soccer team having their last home game on Tuesday, the 24th. At the high school, last Saturday, 14th, we had our official student council kickoff, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. It was a long night, but there was a lot of freshmen there. It really gave them a chance to be familiar with the student council and how we operate and interact with each other. Also, the unified basketball team came off a rough week one loss last week to Riverside. But give it their all out there on Wednesday and we had an energizing overtime tie against New Bedford. Also, a shout and thank you to Isabella Wheeler, Kalen Carter and Lily Price for representing the school at the Regional Student Advisory Council this week, which was represented, which was hosted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Finally, SHM's football game, sorry, finally, SHM's football team will be facing off against a league rival, which is the Rockland Bulldogs, at 7:00 p.m. in the stadium. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Colin. Does anyone have any questions for Colin? Appreciate it, Colin.
Of course. Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Young, members of the school committee. Tonight, my report did have three items on it. I need to make an amendment for the second item on MCAS presentation of data. Dr. Mark Alitis, who, you know, provided the data in the Dropbox and was going to present on this item, is extremely ill. We wish her well, but I'm requesting that we table that till next meeting. We'll begin next meeting with that item. And with that, I'll turn into transportation. So transportation was an item that had been requested that we discuss at this meeting or a meeting. And, you know, I wanted to take a minute to kind of recap what's happened this fall and recognize that there have been ongoing issues with transportation this year. Those issues have been, have ranged from routes to the timeliness of the routes, both at the beginning of the day, at the end of the day, to school and also to homes and bus stops. Communication, there's definitely been a lot of concerns expressed to me about families being aware of late buses, either at arrival or drop off. And, you know, having a general awareness about the process. And then lastly, some issues of behavior on the bus. These are issues that I've heard about, principals have heard about over the last several weeks. What we've done is made an effort to address concerns wherever possible, assist when, if there was something that we could do, we would partner with Five Star, try to bring resolution to all families that reached out. We've tried to assist in communication and adjusted those communication practices to try to give parents and families as much up-to-date, live-time information as we can. We've visited stops when there's been concerns about the bus stop or the closeness to the stop from the residents. Some of our principals have ridden the buses themselves, depending on, depending on what the issue is, we've just tried to be as proactive as we can be. We've also talked with a lot of parents, we've talked to a lot of parents and families about their concerns, and I know there's been a lot of communication with Five Star as well. We've also had several meetings with Five Star. I think we have met probably three or four times this fall, and that doesn't count the communication over the phone. I'm in regular communication with, you know, not just Terry Carvalho, but also representatives who are here tonight, Mr. Mergo and Mr. Donnelly, who are here to present, to talk a little bit about, you know, their perspective and really, they're here with us to discuss tonight, this fall and what they are doing to address these concerns and respond to these inquiries. So with that, I'll invite Tony Mergo and Andrew Donnelly up to the table. I think it would be helpful for them to present to the community. And I'm sure they'd be happy to take questions from the school committee at that point as well. So with that, I'll say welcome and gentlemen, by all means, please take it away.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name's Tony Mergo. I'm a vice president of operations for Student Transportation America, which Five Star is one of our family companies. And I'm here today to talk a little bit about the fall, where we were, where we're going and where we are now. Andy Donnelly is next to me. He's my general manager. He has spent an enormous amount of time here in Middleborough over the last six weeks or so and working with Terry. And before I get started, you know, Terry's a long-term resident. She, I have to recognize her. She's, she's our manager and she's been wonderful. But, you know, as a company, I'm not sure we did right by her. Not to say we did anything wrong, but I'll tell you where, I'll tell you where it started. It started a week before school start, started in, one, we added a vehicle that we weren't sure, the Bristol Aggie Run, which the district used to do, but now there was too many students, so we took it. And quite frankly, it was part of our contract and so we, you know, it was part of what we needed to do. So that was one driver short right there. We also had a driver who was on a special family vacation for two weeks that, that was something that she couldn't pass up with her family. So that was number two. We had a driver out with COVID for a while. And we had a driver out on a family medical leave act. So, so that was four drivers to start with and we do have some spare drivers, but they're very limited on what they can do. So, you know, we started off and obviously there was a lot of scrambling with drivers here that didn't know the town. Middleborough is a, is a big community, as you know, and a lot of them, I'd have to say 70% of the stops are home stops. So the drivers, the lateness really was the drivers going very slow to find the house numbers. So that was, that was part of our problem. And, you know, obviously, we're, we're better. We've hired a couple of drivers. I've hired a, I, I found that we needed another professional in the office, not just a manager. Not part of the contract, but I decided that I would put an assistant manager there full-time. The gentleman has been working part-time while his two weeks' notice is up. He starts full-time on Monday and he has a bus license. So there'll be two full-time people in the office and I know it's hard when, when people are out driving and they can't answer the phone. So that's part of the communication problem. So hopefully that'll stop. We've hired, we have two full-time trainers there as we speak. We've got two, two people in training full-time. And we have two more onboarding, which we have to get through the process to get them into training. So that's kind of where we were and where we're heading. I'm gonna let Danny, Andy talk about where we are today. So that you have a, we went from four drivers short to where we are today and kind of go from there. Any questions before I give it to Andy? Sure.
You mentioned that the spare drivers are limited in what they can do. Can you just clarify what the limitations are?
They've chosen to be spare drivers and they don't want to work full-time. So it's, you know, it's hard to get them into work. I mean, they're retired guys and, and, you know, they're just very limited part-time.
It's not a limitation as to what routes they can do or anything. It's just a limitation as whether or not they want to take the offer.
They're great. They're great, but they're only limited to what they could do.
Okay.
I'm Andy Donnelly, general manager for STA in the Massachusetts area. So thank you to the school committee for having us here tonight. As Tony touched on, we are, you know, headed, I believe, in a great direction. Our staff is becoming full again. We've got some people back from, as he mentioned, we had out on leave. I would like to correct him. We actually have three people in training. No problem. Two still onboarding. One, we have a road test on Monday. So, you know, the more drivers we get, the, the better off we are because, you know, in this, this post-COVID era, there's a lot of, you know, unknowns as far as when we miss and lose drivers for short periods of time. We actually have one more out on COVID right now. So, you know, it's these kinds of things that we've been dealing with to make sure that, you know, number one, we want to be as safe as possible when we're, when we're transporting the students of Middleborough and any students we transport. So we, you know, strive that, strive to have that be our number one goal. And with that, it does, you know, sometimes become a little bit slower if someone doesn't know the route. You know, we do have written directions that come up out of our computer to, to get these people through these routes. So, you know, it can be just a little bit slower. It's not like they've got a GPS hooked up because as a company, we do not believe in that because it distracts the driver from, you know, making sure that these kids are, are safe and, you know, especially when we're, we're getting kids on and off buses, you know, that's the danger zones and times like that. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything as safely as possible. A couple of things that we've done since I've been up here and since the start of school, I've been to the schools, I've met a lot of the admin at the schools, you know, getting their perspective on how things are going and how things were and what we could do better in the future. And we've made a couple of tweaks to our unloading process at the high school and at the elementary schools, which is getting us valuable time. It's only a couple of minutes here and there, but those minutes add up and certainly are making our timing a lot better as far as, you know, reaching these schools on time. You know, in the afternoon, I believe we've been doing much better, getting to homes for these students and making sure that they're getting there at the, you know, in the window of time that we, we have in the schedule. And I think a lot of that has come with just new year, new kids, new routines, new, new routine for parents. So, you know, a lot of times this, this would iron out after maybe two weeks at the beginning of the year. This year, it took a little bit longer because of our, our uncertainty with the drivers and who was actually there for work on those days. So, but like I said, I think we are doing tremendously better and that's the word I'm getting from the admin when I do talk to them. So, you know, I think we're heading in the right direction.
So I have a couple of questions. With the advent of the assistant manager, there's pending something major, but there should be somebody in the office at all times.
Yes, that's been one of the issues as far as communication that superintendent spoke about. Terry, our manager, has a license and she's been out on routes most of the time this year because of the shortness of drivers. So yes, having our new assistant manager, Mike, in there will have somebody in the office.
And can you also talk a little about where you're at with the building?
Sure. And thanks for correcting me. I wish we had 10 drivers in training. Yeah, the building, the building is very close. We're weeks away from opening. All of the tanks have been, been put in the ground. We're waiting for propane. The garage is, the garage itself is ready. We've already sealed the pavement, the cement. The inside, the dispatch center is close to being ready. So we hope to be in there in a few weeks. And once we get that open, I would love to have some kind of a public event to show, you know, our, our new home and, you know, our appreciation of, of Middleborough. And, you know, we made an investment to, to try to, you know, be, have our mechanics here in, in Middleborough. So that's, that's where we're at with the building.
Thank you. Other questions? Jessica, right?
So with the getting used to the routes, has somebody gone through and ensured that all the routes that are posted online are up to date? Made sure the times that are assigned are updated? You know, it might require somebody to do a ride-along. I don't know, but.
No, we will, we have all the routes updated. We will check on the, the process if it's been put online or not. I can't answer that unfortunately, but if it's not, we'll get it up there.
Okay. I think that would be a good item to just follow up on to the parents because I know there are still some that are struggling with timing of leaving for work and things like that because the bus isn't showing up when expected.
Right.
And then the other question I have, especially with new drivers coming onboard, which is great. But especially with the high school route, even some of the middle school route, in another couple of weeks, it's going to be really dark with those routes in the morning. And so that struggle of finding the stop is going to be harder for an unfamiliar driver. So do you guys have a plan if you're getting these drivers in, that when they are starting to do these routes in the dark, they, we won't have those delays again like at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, absolutely. While these people are in training, I've asked to, as much time they have, we've asked them to ride routes and get to learn routes, even though they're not licensed or ready to go. So, so absolutely, I mean, that's part of the process. We have to get them ready and understand the town and understand the routes. So we will be shuffling around and kind of get them out in the town. Andy actually has driven a couple of times and, and, you know, he, he's done okay, but he's even told me he struggles because of, because of, because it's a big place, but.
I turn my GPS on to make my way around parts of town still, so, and I lived here my whole life, so I understand. But I do think that if your job is to find that kid, it can get really stressful if you see your bus coming and it doesn't stop at the right place.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And again, you know, I, in our letter, you know, I apologize, but we definitely apologize for, you know, the, the poor service in the first couple of weeks of school.
Other questions?
One of the biggest issues, I think, at the start of all of this was communication. A lot of parents felt that it wasn't being communicated with late buses, things like that. So can you maybe let us know, like, what process there, there is? When you're informed of a late bus, how does that get back to the schools in a timely fashion so alerts can go out to parents before the bus is 20, 30 minutes late?
Right. Well, one of, one of the major communication problems was Terry was out driving and that's gonna stop. You know, Mike will be there. That's one of the main reasons why I hired an assistant manager, because it's necessary. You know, even for us, you know, if there's an accident, we need somebody in the building to get to it. So it's, it's important that we have someone in, in the office at all times.
Sorry, just to follow up with that, I think part of the, you know, we don't want anything wrong to happen. But if something goes wrong, we don't want the only person in the office to be the one that has to go out to solve that. You know, there needs to be enough people to call upon to, you know, go and sub out the bus or whatever, that there's always somebody in the office to listen for whatever else is going on.
Yeah, the person in the office will dispatch another bus to, if whatever happens, will dispatch another bus and obviously, right away, call the school that's involved and those kinds of things. So that's, that's part of our protocol anyway. So, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that that happens. Andy, did you want to say something?
I was gonna just touch on the original question. As far as the communication piece, you know, we rely on our drivers to let us know. So once we find out in our, in the office, we, we contact, as Tony just said, whoever is affected by this. So we do have a contact through the superintendent's office that we call immediately. And then if he cannot call the schools, we'll call the school directly as well to let them know. And then we rely on the schools to kind of disseminate that information out to the parents. But that's, that's how the process works. You know, as, as soon as we find out, our first thought is to, you know, make that call to whoever needs to know that information.
And I have to say that our current staff, our drivers, every single one of them are wonderful people. They've all tried hard. We've had to help some of them, even the veterans. But I can't, I wouldn't trade any of them for anybody. So I actually had a little dinner for them last night thanking them for all their hard work. So they're, they're really great people and I'm sure you know most of them. So, so we're very fortunate that we had them.
Other questions? Chris, correct?
Yeah. So thank you for coming tonight and I also want to second your praise for the bus drivers. They've been great. Most, like Marcy said, most of the, the issues that I hear about is communication. And so I don't know if this is better for the superintendent or, or you. So once the schools hear about it, what is the best way families who have children on buses should expect to receive that information? Like, there's been times where, and I understand there's shortages and all that, where a different bus number pulls up to our house and our caretaker has my kindergartner and, you know, a different bus driver says, you know, he's coming on my bus today. But I didn't necessarily receive that information ahead of time. Is, should everybody sign up for Class Tag? Who's got a bus student? Is that the way that we're primarily gonna communicate?
Yeah, let me, let me take at least the first step of that. So when we hear information from Five Star and they communicate with us, it's really the push of a button for us. We have it down to a science. We select the riders. We select the riders of that bus because, you know, you don't need to alert the entire building that this bus, if it's one bus that's late. Well, we had some issues in the beginning of the year where the bus numbers were not, that was not accurate information in Aspen. So your child might have been listed on bus six when they were really bus three. That created some confusion, which I do believe has been hammered out. I think that all of the buildings really went and had to double check. And that was creating confusion. Now, in answer to your question, if there's a double run where a different bus that's not typically assigned to your child picks up, that's information we have to know. I think there were a couple of times where a double run was called. Middleborough, we didn't necessarily know that was happening until buses were already rolling. So by the time we got that communication out, parents, it wasn't helpful to parents. So, you know, we've talked about the, you know, together, the desire to not run double runs. Middleborough is a very tough place to do that. In a smaller geographic town, you can get away with that more readily. And I do think it's a last resort for Five Star. We had some interesting, you know, situations that warranted it, but I know that that's kind of a last resort just because it takes too long, even in a, in a quick sense, you know, a double run's going to be problematic. But I think our communication, I know Five Star supplied us with a radio, so we're able to listen in and that's monitored all morning and all afternoon outside of their office as well. So hopefully, I mean, I do think some of those communication concerns were earlier in the year. I don't know that it's 100% perfect, but I I've seen an increase in, you know, people feeling informed and a decrease in parents or families reaching out to say, hey, I'm still not being communicated with. For any family member who's listening and feels like that information is coming to them late, I would encourage them to reach out to their building just so we can double check that information and make any corrections we would have to make at this point.
If I, if I may, you know, maybe we ought to clarify all these communication issues and and kind of have like a group with with the with the district and us to come up with some communication policies that we could follow. That would make it a lot easier. I know in other districts in the past, we've had somewhat of a transportation subcommittee and go over a lot of these, these issues like communication and and walk into, you know, all kinds of different policies. So I welcome that also if if that will help.
Cool. Thank you, Tom. Other questions? And will the audience have a question? Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Andrew, for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you for inviting us. Have a great evening.
Okay. And so with that, I will turn to the next item, which is the business office update. As you know, Mrs. Hickey has provided her notice of resignation. She's taking a job in another town. We anticipated her exit to occur in late November, just after the Thanksgiving break. Unfortunately, Mrs. Hickey is now on leave and will not be returning. And the district really requires a director of business and finance, a business manager, it doesn't really matter what title you use, but someone in this position. As we approach the this time period, we're staring down the completion of the end of year report, which has an impending due date and this coming budget season. This means that we require really immediate service. Last week, I prepared an invitation for bids for interim financial services, and I did, I shared this invitation for bids with you. This really includes a breakdown of temporary financial services that would be in place for the rest of the fiscal year and would allow people to to give us a bid to complete specific tasks, like the completion of the end of year report, like the budget process, and also leading the bid process for all of our facilities projects this year. So there are three, which include the Nichols Chiller, the mech gym roof, and the pool dehumanification system. All three of those projects ideally will be done by the time we open for the 24, 25 school year. That timeline only works if we have timely bids that go out and our providers are allowed to order their materials and and bid on those jobs. This is why it's so time sensitive. So, you know, as I notified you, a couple of weeks ago, I immediately posted for that job. But at this point, and knowing that there's nobody in the seat as of today, these are truly items that cannot wait and really require immediate action. So I'm seeking consent from the school committee this evening to award a bid to the lowest bidder for these invitation for bids. The window closes tomorrow. These temporary services would last through the end of the fiscal year, as I mentioned earlier, and I would continue to search for a director of business and finance. So it's important that it's not like that process stops. Unfortunately, there is a season, there is a hiring season, so it can be difficult to seat an administrator in the middle of the school year because conceivably they're sitting in a seat and or could be sitting in a seat in another school district. Nonetheless, I'd continue that search and were we to find a candidate, these temporary services would stop. I wouldn't wait to hire somebody, but realistically, I'm thinking that, you know, hiring a company that can come in and provide these discreet services to us would be the fastest, most most qualified solution at this point. And then those, as I said, should we find that candidate, that we would be able to end our agreement with with those companies. So I do, I don't have any bids this evening. I am anticipating one bid tomorrow, and I would forward that when we got it. I certainly would like you to see it, review it. The way this process would work is the, I would award the contract to the lowest bidder. I did use multiple, I solicited from multiple organizations from the state bid list, and that's kind of the information I have for this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We're in a, we're in a unique situation, and I think it requires a unique solution.
Just a couple of things so everyone knows. First, the end of the year report is due mid-December, according to state rules. This is the end of last fiscal year, not end of calendar year.
And this is, sorry, I know Sarah had mentioned that we needed to ask for an extension.
She did.
So that is the extension due date, correct? Thank you.
Correct. The other piece is that as soon as that ends, that brings you into the town fiscal situation. So we we usually start the budget subcommittee end of December and really starts school vacation, if you will, and then continues through January because we generally run our, our meetings through February and then we tend to do the budget hearing in March. The other thing I'll tell you too is even if you were to find a business manager, most business managers, contractually, you're going to have to give anywhere between 30 and 120 days. That's in most contracts for business manager and above. So even if we were to find somebody tomorrow, it'd still be a piece of time that we'd need to do it. I know other towns have done this. This is not sort of unusual. It's, it's what usually happens when you lose somebody midstream or somebody retires midstream, if you don't know, really know about the retirement. Does anyone have any questions? Al?
Did we get the information we need for the end of the year report from the town?
We do have, so the, the end of the year, the fiscal year was closed, but I do believe that questions remain that are going to warrant significant discussion in order to complete the end of year report. I do think that work has started and I think it's ongoing, but I do know that the town is anticipating a new town accountant in mid-November. So conclusively, I can't tell you, yes, we have everything we need, but I do know that the end of the fiscal year has closed. So in theory, we should be, you know, ready to to move. And I do know that some of this report was completed, but definitely not all of it.
I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to hiring a firm to do this type of thing in the future. Would hiring a firm on a permanent basis be an option or?
So this is something I actually want to pay attention to. I think using this time period to assess exactly that question is what we should be doing and saying, okay, we've lived with, you know, a director of business and finance that's in-house, part of our leadership team, part of our executive committee. Let's compare what that feels like to have, you know. As long as you have a business manager of record, that's what your obligation is in terms of the school. You have to have someone in that seat, but it does not have to be someone that is, you know, hired by Middleborough Public Schools and part of the leadership team of the district. So I think it'd be a good opportunity, to be honest with you. I know one of the things I put in the invitation was that while we're, while we be seeking these interim services, it would be a good opportunity to actually assess our, our business office practices more generally. This isn't something that we typically have had the ability to do, but having outside eyes come in and say, well, why do you do that process this way could yield some more efficient solutions for us. Or not, they might tell us that we're already as efficient as we can be. But I think we should be paying attention. Do we like this model? I do know one other district that's using this as we speak, this kind of arrangement because they were in a similar circumstance, and it's only been a few weeks, so it's not really long enough to know, but the early feedback's been very positive.
Yeah, let us know how it's going and maybe that's a discussion we have later.
Well, and I also, I should share that, so these interim services, they would still come to school committee probably once a month if, you know, or as necessary. I doubt it would be every meeting, but that would also give you the opportunity to meet with these folks and kind of conduct your own assessment as well, which I think you'd appreciate.
Thank you. So the other thing too, though, to remember that I think is important is the business manager also has other functions and responsibilities aside from everything we're sort of laying out here today. So the business manager is essentially the supervisor of the business office. So they control six employees. And on top of that, the business manager wasn't supervising our transportation office, not for the Five Star buses, obviously, but for the, the program that we run. So we're not hiring an outside firm from when I looked at the thing to manage those pieces. Those pieces right now are going to fall on the superintendent. And so I would, I would caution people that when you hire an outside firm like that, we have to look at what happens to those particular pieces too.
Oh, yeah. I would, if we're going to assess this, I'd like to...
No, no, absolutely. I just, you know, there's a little more than just sort of the business functions that we're used to, so I just raised that too.
Yep.
Jeff?
Thinking further along those lines, if this is the process for the end of the year, what happens to those other responsibilities for the end of the year? Do we appoint an interim, you know, supervisor for the staff? I mean, or at least the, the head of the transportation type thing? Or does that stay on Carolyn's shoulders?
It's Carolyn's right now until there's a plan otherwise to... To change it.
I also wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate to spend more money, to be honest with you. Those pieces involve food service, facilities, the oversight of central office, and yes, specialized transportation. But these are pieces I've always been involved with, and not only am I happy to do that, I have the luxury of an executive committee that does, that does help. Absolutely. I think that, you know, Jennifer Haley's been influential with specialized transport. Sean Siciliano's been extremely helpful with transportation. I am not a one-man show, not at all, but I would not advocate for the expenditure of more funds. It'd probably be worth having a conversation towards the end of the year, but I'm more than competent to take on the new employee, or not new employees, but our central office employees. I've already met with them several times. I've, I've also cultivated some new systems to make sure that they have, you know, the ability to meet, ask questions, and make sure they're supported. So that will continue this year regardless. I would take, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to contract that out to anyone else. I think it's too jarring for those departments.
But there's enough of the staff to adjust responsibilities slightly to kind of cover the bases of what needs to be done.
Okay.
Marcy.
So if we contract with the accounting services firm, are we going to have a dedicated person equivalent to Sarah or is it a team of people that will be working like on a Middleborough account?
That's an excellent question. It's a question I have for myself. There, they kind of tailor their solutions to every, every situation. Sometimes it is more than one person. I can tell you, it is often not five days of in-district presence. I think a lot of these companies are retirees. They want the flexibility of remote work. When I get that bid, I think it'd be important to look. That's one of the first questions is how many, how many different people would we be man, would be working with and how many days of in-district presence? From the day-to-day functions of POs and warrants, you know, that's the work that really has to be done here. When you look at the work of an end-of-year report or even the budget process, it really could lend itself to remote work. So for me, it's, I think it's a reasonable question, and I would hope it's not more than two people because we're not a very large district. And I think too many people, it'll get confusing. But I think that would be the thing I'd want to really be able to finesse so that if there is remote work, we have some control over what exactly is being done remotely.
And I also think that with the firms, you're also, it tends to be depending on what the service is that you're looking for, right? You might get somebody, for example, goes over the audits when we get the audits all done. So you have somebody who's done a lot of that working in the firm as opposed to writing the end-of-the-year report for the state as opposed to getting ready for budgets, that kind of thing. So you will get, you will get a little of this and a little of that from different people at times. And some of that makes sense because it's, like I said, it's specialization, so it's helpful. Other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question? Yes, sir.
Very free. When I went to school, you had to be at the end of the driveway. William Gossel, 17, Perry Free. Who sets the policy to where the kids have to be when they catch the school bus?
We'll get back to that. We're going to finish this conversation about this, but I'll have an answer for you right after we finish that, okay?
All right.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Chair would entertain a motion to allow the superintendent to sign a contract with a...
Second.
Go ahead. You're making the motion. I'm sorry. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So in answer to your question, sir, what happens? It depends on the student. Different students at various times will require different things. So when the bus route is set up, it's tried to, it's, it's essentially set up by a routing software, but there are particular students that we have who require particular things, and that changes in period of time. For example, something might happen with a child that they need to be picked up at their door. And it, it all depends.
What, what I'm kind of asking is when I went to school, I know it was a long time ago, if you went at the end of the driveway, the bus didn't stop, it kept on going, you missed the bus. The kids weren't in the house waiting for the bus to pull up to get out of the house or waiting in the car in front of a subdivision road to get out of the thing, you were actually at the end of the roadway. And now I see it all the time that the bus driver has to wait for the kids to get to the bus. And you have to keep on doing that, that makes the bus driver late. I, I want to know who sets the policy? The bus company or the school, school committee sets the policy where the kids are going to be?
The rides, so it, again, it depends. There is a policy about how students get picked up, okay? But depending on, different things happen in a student's life that requires a change. It also depends, quite frankly, on the bus itself and the route because some places can't go down certain roads and turn around.
A lot of times the bus driver has to wait for the person, the kid to come out of the house and walk out. If you keep doing that, they're going to put, put the bus late on their route toward the end. When I went to school, if you went at the end of the road, you missed the bus. That's all I'm just asking is when did the policy change then? Who sets the policy? The school committee or the bus?
It's, it's a little both based on what, what the, where the students are and what's happening with the students.
What, if you don't mind, I don't, I can answer a little bit of this because I met with the drivers at the very beginning of the school year, and they expressed that exact concern, hey, how long do I have to wait? And so we talked about that as a group, and what we came up with is, you know, every family has a different scenario. There are reasons why people run late every day, but I expressed to them if it becomes a pattern, so that if you're going to that bus stop and it's happening multiple times, that's when I would want them to notify the building principal so that we can place a call home. Because I do think you're right, the longer that bus driver has to, has to wait, the longer it's going to take the route to go from start to finish. So that's, that's probably the, the best answer I can give you, that when that's happening, I've asked the, the drivers to monitor that and be our eyes and ears so that we can reach out to that family, see if they need assistance or see what's going on in order to, to quicken that turnaround time.
So basically you're telling me if every parent wants to have their kid in the house and wait for the bus stop before they come out of the house or sit in the, in the car at the end of the subdivision road and wait till the bus stops, that's okay? Every, every parent can do that?
No, no, no. We definitely want our families... We definitely want our families to have our students ready and outside. What I'm saying is even though we ask that, that doesn't mean that happens every day. It depends. In the cold, that doesn't, that often doesn't happen and in the, the elements, the rain, it also sometimes doesn't happen. So we do, we do ask them to do that. I'm not at all saying that everyone should stay in their house and wait for the bus to roll up. We would like our students to be ready. I just realize that that doesn't always happen.
Anything else?
That completes my report for this evening.
Okay. Next item on the agenda was the high school building project. So the high school building committee met its final meeting two weeks ago?
Yep.
A week ago, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
And so the building, everything's been turned over to the school, everything's in the process of, all the checklist pieces were done. Everything is completed. There is a final audit that has to occur through the Mass Building Assistance Association. That audit generally takes about a year. So hopefully everything's completed by the end of this fiscal year and the town gets their last payment from MSBA. The project came in about $7 million on the budget, so we're happy with that.
Mr. Jay, you should say that again.
Sure. The project came in about $7 million on the budget. That was also, obviously the project was lengthened because everything with COVID and everything like that, but that's $7 million even with the additional time that we had to put in. We did receive about $800,000 from Opera Funds that we were able to get, which were from the feds. When COVID took over to, for a wide variety of things, some of it was safety, things on site for the workers at the time and then anything that was sort of costing us more, we were able to get reimbursed so the town didn't have to pay for it. I believe the final percentage was 42%.
Reimbursement?
Yeah. Reimbursement from the state was 42% of the, of the project. That's not 42% of the whole project because there are certain things that under their rules are not reimbursable. So yeah, it was all in all, everything went very, very well.
Do you recall what the original percentage was?
It was just about that. The percentage falls into place, there's other things that you have to do. For example, you have to achieve at least bronze status. We achieved silver. We weren't that far off from gold, which would add a little more points, but they get tight with certain things that they want done. That didn't, didn't make sense. We also, for example, we spent more funds on this room because they only allotted a certain number at the time and the building committee at the time made the decision that this current room is the exact same size chair-wise as the previous one. And given that we've had, in the past, we've had some pretty big town meetings and stuff like that, we wanted to make sure that we didn't undersize for, for things like that. So all in all, for the most part, the committees stayed the same with different add-ons. I think the main add-ons have been the selectmen over a period in time. And, you know, I really want to thank everybody who served on that committee. There were several people who served on the committee, quite frankly, that could have done project work here, but their service on the committee exempted them from being able to do that. And their, some of the abilities that they had and were fantastic because they were able to save us money here and there and really look at costs in ways that I don't think anyone would be able to. We had an architect on the project who was a community member. We had an electrician on the project who was, we had people who work in the building trades over a period in time who worked on that project. So very thankful that was arguably one of the biggest committees I've ever been on, but everyone did a really fantastic job and should be very, very proud of themselves. So.
In terms of the audit that's required, if anything is found on the audit that requires updates, is that now because this is set and done?
It's not, it's not the audit in that they would require updates for, it's the audit that you, so what happens is there is essentially a, every time something changes, those changes are essentially, you, they have to redo a budget each and every time and send it to MSBA. And so what they're making sure of is whatever your final budget numbers are and whatever's changed, that you've completed those tasks.
Okay.
And so that's the pieces. And so our project manager has done a really good job of consistently updating it. And so every single time something changed, there was a new budget sent to MSBA. Some people wait and do it, you know, as you can imagine, do it like every year or something like that. They chose not to do that. They really went through that process each and every time so the budget would change and alter and be sent to them. And we would constantly get feedback from them saying, thank you, you know, we appreciate this. This is a, makes our lives easier, if you will.
Thank you.
So yeah. Any other questions? Thank you. Do you have anything you want?
I just, I mean, echo, I want to echo the, you know, the gratitude I have for the committee. This was a major committee and a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into it. One of the things they said in the last meeting that struck me is that this same project would be considerably more costly if it was done today. So we spent a lot of time talking about COVID and how that was going to impact the cost. And I don't have the exact figures, so don't quote me entirely, but this project ran around 560 some odd dollars a square foot. And if it happened today, it'd be over $900 a square foot. And I think that's, you know, a true testament to the strength of the committee, the, the commitment to completing the project in the middle of COVID. And, you know, I just wanted to express my, my gratitude and my thanks. This is a beautiful, state-of-the-art facility and our, our families are so fortunate in this town.
And a lot of it had to do with, in some ways, the, the way Fontaine Brothers planned it. Because as soon as Fontaine Brothers came on board, they bought the steel for the project. And if they had waited a month, there was a steel embargo. And so those type of things just hit us perfectly and we were able to do things. There was also, when we started this process, we knew there were going to be a couple other projects in the pipeline. And so we sort of wanted to get ahead of them so we weren't competing against other projects in the area. And, and, you know, thankfully, we knew Kid Card Tech was wrapping up and we knew Stoughton was wrapping up at the time. And so we were the ones, and, and as you can imagine now, I mean, you know, the Bristol Plymouth is in the process of building now and, you know, they're, they're expensive because of the facilities they're building, but part of it is the timing. And like Carolyn said, it was a situation that things planted right for Middleborough when we did. And also, you know, we, we ran, we encountered other things that were very helpful. For example, we, the Wood Street exit was a purchase we made with the Archdiocese of Boston for land that they owned. And I was surprised, but we valued the land with a real estate. We did three evaluations and they were in agreement with it almost immediately and there was no, you know, lengthy negotiations on those parts and we were able to do that pretty quickly. So there were some, those pieces that were very helpful. And also in buying that, that's what set up the backfield, which is the secondary field on the side here. So it was helpful along the way. And it's obviously, obviously helpful that the townspeople were behind it and, and funded it. So we're thankful for that too. Thank you. Just on the agenda is the piece about the MAS, MAS Conference, which is the eighth through the 10th. The consent agenda, just so everyone knows, we pulled the piece that was a question about the, with the PTA piece. So Chair, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Sorry, second.
Second.
Discussion. All this on the consent agenda is a wide variety of fundraisers and some, a couple of donations and meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And the last item, Chair, entertain a motion to approve an out-of-state field trip for Mary Kay Good, which is going to the Museum of Natural History in Providence, Rhode Island.
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And with that, our next school committee meeting is November 2nd. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody.